Calling this meeting back to order, or calling to order, the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. Have we already done roll calls?
No.
Okay, Superintendent Roll Call.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
I'm here.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Murawski.
Here.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Wu. Member Phillips.
I started a chain reaction. Sorry. Okay, item 2.0, public comment regarding items on special meeting agenda only. And I believe, how many comments do we have currently?
Approximately 45.
25 comments?
Forty-five on item 3.1.
Okay, with that, we want to hear from each member of our community. So we ask that you keep your comments to one minute. And with that, we, is that the will of the board? One minute? One minute, okay. Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, go right ahead, Ms. Ready. Oh, and welcome, student members.
Our first public speaker is Ariel Rodriguez.
Hi there. I'm a parent to a kindergartner and a third grader at Alice Burney, and I'm strongly in support of continuing to mask indoors for our students, teachers, and staff, and continuing the district's policy of weekly testing. The findings a week ago by the New York State Department of Health Study of the efficacy of Pfizer's vaccine showed that while the lower dose vaccine for children ages 5 to 11 decreased the severity of illness, it was not particularly helpful in preventing COVID transmission, dropping to 12% effectiveness after three months. With all other precautions ending, including the district's vaccine mandate and outdoor masking, the easiest and very best remaining layer of defense is masking indoors. Masking has significantly proven effective in curbing the transmission of COVID, and the CDC reported findings just this morning that in a K through 12 environment, schools with an indoor/outdoor mask requirement saw a 23% lower incidence of COVID cases compared to schools with no mask requirement. Our precaution fatigue is not reason enough to abandon the protection of masks, which are highly effective, simple, relatively inexpensive, and widely available. Last week, my third grader told me she didn't feel safe at school due to the decreased use of masks and was worried about putting her family in danger. I beg of the board to make decisions that are truly in the best interests of our students. And with respect to COVID, at this current point in time, and given what we know, the safest and easiest way to protect our unvaccinated and vaccinated students, our teachers, staff, and our community is to maintain both the indoor masking and weekly testing policies. And if it were up to me, I'd want testing to be mandatory. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Next speaker. Go ahead, Ms. Hoff.
Hello, I'm one of the over 600 who signed the petition in support of keeping the mask mandate in place. I ask the board to consider the most vulnerable. Many students have siblings under the age of five that cannot yet be vaccinated. Many students, like my son, are high-risk or immunocompromised. New research shows that the 5 to 11 vaccine is not as effective at preventing transmission. Please do not place students and teachers at risk based on false narratives about personal freedom. And don't be persuaded by those who weaponize mental health as a reason to end masking. The truth is, masking is a simple, effective health measure that protects students and teachers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hoff. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Larissa Miller Lurch.
Larissa, what was her name one more time?
Larissa Miller Lurch.
I have three students in the Sacramento City Unified School District. My oldest has graduated last year and is now teaching in an after-school program at an elementary school. So she is still in the district while she goes to college. And I have a fourth grader and a junior in high school. So I've been in the district a long time, and I strongly support we continue to use masks, at least through the end of this year, for many of the reasons that have already been stated. And also because I know that new variants and surges come quickly. And it is difficult for us to react in time to protect people. For example, we got this wonderful message about getting new masks. You know, the N95s and the KF94s. Well, Omicron has kind of come and gone a little bit. The surge is dying down. We still haven't even gotten those masks that were supposed to protect us during the surge.
Thank you.
And yet, we don't have them. So my feeling is if we keep the mask mandate, we are better prepared to quickly protect ourselves from a new surge that could come. And we don't know when that will happen. And we aren't going to be sitting and trying to react late and then seeing half our students go out sick, half our teachers go out sick with a new variant, and missing time at school.
Thank you.
So there's been lots of good reasons stated, and I just want to add to it that this is the best way to prevent and not get stuck behind the eight ball.
Thank you.
Faithfully react in time.
Thank you.
So thank you, folks. And my son will be speaking soon.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Justin Chu Griffith.
Go ahead, Justine.
Hi, I'm a middle schooler at an SCUSD school, and I really support keeping our mask mandates how they are. I don't think I'll be able to focus in class if we remove the masks. When people aren't wearing their masks, I don't think about my schoolwork or my grades because all I can think about is this disease and if I'm putting my family at risk. And I know a lot of my friends, they felt the same way. They aren't focusing on their school anymore because all they can think about is if they're safe at school. And I don't think I should have to put my safety and security at school on the line for other people's comfort, especially when a lot of those other people aren't the students, but the parents of students. Thank you.
Thank you, Justine.
Next speaker. Our next speaker is Janine Rupert.
Go ahead, Ms. Rupert.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Janine Rupert, and I am an SCUSD teacher, parent, and community member. Thank you for the opportunity for giving me a moment to speak with you. I have a couple of points that I'd like to make in favor of lifting the indoor mask mandate. Number one is the fact that the district won't be going rogue here with a rash decision. We're not the first by far. And plus, mask removal is optional. Not everybody needs to take them off if they feel compromised or uncomfortable. Number two, my sixth graders need to be able to see my face. But more importantly, I think that I need to see theirs. I should be able to see them smile and laugh and to see when they're upset or frustrated. And they've got to be able to share and discuss and present to their peers without muted, muffled voices. And then the third point that I'd like to make is we've got a problem now with kids not wanting to show their faces, especially pre-teens and teenagers. I go out in the yard and I see 270 intermediate kids with masks on outside. You should, when you get a chance, look at the latest and greatest TikTok trend called mask fishing. It's a scary, sad thing. Hiding behind.
If you could please wrap it up, Ms. Rupert.
Masks has become welcomed and normal for so many of our kids, my own included, and it's not for health reasons. Face coverings on our students needs to become a thing of the past. I feel that they're beginning to be detrimental for some age groups.
Thank you, Ms. Rupert.
It's just not normal. So I'm all in favor of taking them off inside the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Bailey.
Go ahead, Ms. Bailey.
Hello, there was a little bit of a delay there.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I'm a classified employee and instructional aide at AnWen. I'm asking the board to vote to continue the mask mandate for a reason I haven't heard discussed much. I'm vaccinated with access to good healthcare, as is my family. I'm feeling safer as our numbers continue to go down and more folks get vaccinated. However, I work in a small, poorly ventilated classroom directly with students. There are zero subs for me if I should get sick, whether it be COVID or a common cold. My job is critical to the success of the students, to access learning, and for the teacher to instruct with flexibility and focus. I've been able to avoid illness almost completely with masks being worn in the class. I should be allowed to have a sick day and know that there will be a sub to fill my position. Knowing that there is no chance of this happening is an unfair burden. This stands true for all of the teachers and staff. To remove masks with the level of sub shortages we currently have will further compromise the sub-staffing shortage and create continued warehousing of our students, which clearly puts them at risk.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. If you could please wrap it up.
I will. So the second thing I wanted to ask is, I, on Thursday, I sat, I had, I wanted to make a public comment. I signed up for the closed session. I did this on Thursday, and I waited until 1 o'clock in the morning to make my comment. Is it possible for me to make my comment from the closed session now? Or do I have to wait? I can't stay up that late. Again, it's already, I don't know what time. So.
You're over your time right now. If you can wrap it up in like 30 seconds, go right ahead.
Okay, so the second part is just from the closed session with good faith bargaining. You all are asking, what's being asked of the classified staff is unfair. We deserve a livable wage. We deserve to not be looking at freezes in our pay, all of those things that are listed on your website. We deserve better. And I, it just makes me sad that positions are getting cut and you're looking at making our wages, take-home pay, less than it already is.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Thanks for giving me that extra time. I appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Sharon Saraga.
Hello.
Go right ahead, Ms. Saraga.
Yeah, thank you. I want to tell a story. My dad worked hard all his life with the government and retired. He really enjoys his life being an awesome grandpa and living with his grandchildren. However, the doctors saying he's aging and need dialysis soon. This makes him severely immunocompromised at this stage. Keeping the mask on will protect our family and keep the family together. The alternatives will be very difficult decision for us. If we decide to keep my family safe, what is the schooling option for my children? Well, enough children have already been out of school due to the illness. The district needs to have a detailed plan for the immunocompromised children, a teacher, if the mask were to come off. That's the only responsible thing to do. There are only three more, a little over three months left in the school year. Please keep protecting the children, especially those the most in need of our protection, and keep our families together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Patricia Hughes.
Please go ahead, one minute.
Hello, my name is Patricia, and I have worked at a local preschool for almost seven years now. According to the CDC and the science that has been accumulated over the last few years with COVID, children ages 0 to 17 years of age have a 99.997% survival rate. If you guys would follow the science, then that means that our children are not at risk from COVID and therefore should not be forced to wear a mask. But according to the research, they do nothing. They do more harm than good, including but not limited to causing speech delays, lack of confidence and self-esteem, anxiety, and severe depression. There is a national emergency in children's mental health due to these masks. We are pro-vaccine, but we are anti-mandate. I encourage you today to teach our educators to support mass choice in school since there have been reports of teachers bullying, harassing, and making students feel bad. This is in violation of California Ed Code 201, Civil Code 51 and 52. And also, I urge you now to call up your legislators and oppose SB 871, which will mandate the COVID vaccine in order for our children to attend public school. Also, lastly, I just recently overcome COVID last week. Took me seven days to get over that. I'm around children all the time. I wear my mask at school and work all the time. They did not get sick.
Thank you. If you could please wrap it up.
Okay. And also, lastly, hold on. I also want to say that my at-risk mother was around me. She's also fine. She's been vaccinated. So she's good. We want choice. That's all we are asking. And none of my kids are sick again. And also, they're all healthy. Please, we are asking for choice. That is all we are asking.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Justin Hughes.
Go ahead, Justin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So per CNN, The Atlantic Magazine, NPR, which are all to the left of Trotsky, the only masks that work against the new variants need to be surgical-grade and airtight. You can't touch or move them, and you need to replace them at least daily for a disease with an outbreak than 99.997% survival rate for children. If you're fully vaccinated, your survival rate is 99.99%. So your plan is to insist children who aren't at risk from COVID to wear more restrictive, airtight masks all day with the constant eye of scrutiny on their young faculties. And you think this isn't hurting their development? Seriously, no. All, the only question, are we going to be the first generation to sacrifice the health of the young for the sake of the elderly? A society like that is lost. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Cassandra Hoff.
Go ahead, Cassandra.
Hi, I'm sorry, I already went. I went second.
I thought I recognized your name. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Christine Bankston.
Go ahead, Christine.
Hi, I'm going to be using Matthew Bankston, Madison Bankston, Veronica Solais, and Teresa Weaver's time.
Okay, that's five minutes. Go right ahead.
Thank you. SCUSD, welcome to the meeting you were not planning on having. I'm happy to sit here in my home while you're at the Cerner Center conducting this meeting in masks without public attendance. I wonder why that is? Oh, that's right, COVID. While those opposing masks in school rely on the same anecdotal rhetoric, I and many others have come here today with something they don't have: science-based facts. Facts supporting that mask mandates do work. Mandates, not suggestions. Nearly 2/3 of California voters, including a majority of parents, support mask and vaccine mandates in K through 12 schools, according to the poll conducted this month by the Institute of Governmental Studies at UC Berkeley and co-sponsored by the LA Times. I am one of over the 600 signatures on our petition to keep the mask mandate in place, which, by the way, only took a couple of days. The CDC's Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Report this week analyzed Arkansas schools last fall, showing that districts with full mask policies had 23% lower COVID-19 instances than mask-optional districts. While COVID is not a concern for many healthy, young people, there are 10 million Californians who are considered at elevated risk of serious complications from COVID-19, according to a 2020 report from Kaiser Family Foundation. That's 1/3 of adults in California. Your solution, Aguilar, that we at-risk families go to IS is contradictory to the fact that you want IS students back in class. Taking away the mandate will only get you further from that goal. Your staffing shortages are about to get much worse, considering you're now at asking high-risk teachers to sacrifice their safety to stay in class. Just last week, a Roseville school had students once again in the cafeteria wasting time because teachers called out sick. Guess if they enforced their mask mandate? They didn't. May I remind you, teachers do not get paid enough to get yelled at by 30-plus parents with absolutely no support from the school board? That they also don't have subs available to them or enough paid sick leave should they get sick? Now let's talk about limiting the spread. While most districts twiddle their thumbs and wait for the March 11 deadline to pass to go with state recommendations, this puts a huge strain on our already failing healthcare system. Opening all the schools and public businesses means our already high case rate is going to go up once again. Just because we're seeing a decline doesn't mean we are a low-risk area. We are a moderate-risk area, and we haven't even seen the impact that opening the state has on the numbers. Good luck getting surgery if you need it during a surge. When our healthcare systems are overwhelmed, everyone suffers. Masking in school helps negate the spread of COVID. Masking is one of the simplest, most effective tools we have to reduce the spread of COVID. Currently, only 30% of elementary 5 to 11-year-olds, SCUSD children, are vaccinated. While still good at preventing severe illness, it isn't as effective as permitting, preventing transmission to family members and the public. Our analysis of SCUSD elementary school compares the 5 to 11 school population vaccine rates to the LCFF unduped percent, showing that we will put the most vulnerable kids, English learning, language learning, low-income students, and foster youth at risk by eliminating masking requirements, particularly as this population tends to be more chronically undervaccinated. We are, why are we even risking it with four more months left in school? Our children are already used to masks and wear them with no problem. Let our teachers and staff have a summer break without this added stress. If you think you can simply re-implement masks in time to not affect our schools, you're mistaken. A majority of schools are already failing to uphold the mandate, which means the ones who are actually enforcing the mandate need to stay in place even more.
Thank you, Ms. Bankston.
Can I have the rest of my time?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I thought you were finished. Thank you, Ms. Bankston. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Christine Fiorentini.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Yes, I'd like to donate my time to Jeanne Shainley, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Christopher Williams.
Hi, good evening, thank you. Appreciate you guys having me. So I was waiting to see what your time limit was, and I tried to tailor my statement to as close as I could to a minute. It might go a little over, so I'll try to be concise as I can. So appreciate if you let me finish. I got it written out.
Okay, go, go, go ahead.
As fast as I can, okay, guys?
Yep, go right ahead.
So, thank you. I'm a parent of two elementary school children. So just a quick observation, you guys all appear to be in the same location. Generally, the background, and you're all wearing masks. To me, this is indicative of your understanding of the importance of the protection masks provide against COVID. As it was important for you, it should be as much, if not more important, for our children to have the same protection. It's our job as adults to make decisions to protect our children, and your job as elected officials to implement the right decisions for them. Children require structure and rules to ensure positive results. Masks work. They're clinically proven and are a visible, tangible measure that we can control and regulate to prevent the spread of this dangerous disease. Masking is the primary mechanism that enabled our return to in-person learning and the reason most parents agreed to allow their children to return. If you remove that, we'll certainly jeopardize that current status. I just listened to an interview today with Dr. Bob Wachter, the Chair of UCSF's Department of Medicine, who recommended masks whenever in large groups indoors.
Thank you. If you could please wrap it up, Mr. Williams.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Our children sit in small rooms with 36 to 38 children, less than three feet apart, all day long, every day. Schools and classes are woefully out of compliance with significant percentages of students who are not yet vaccinated or simply have refused to comply with the vaccination requirement. There's an average of anywhere from 26 to 86% of the student population in your schools that are unvaccinated. This is displayed on the Return to New School Dashboard.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
There was an email that came out on the Fourth that made a claim that 93.75% of the students are in compliance with that vaccination requirement. That's categorically false. It's visible on the Republican Dashboard.
Please wrap it up.
Honestly, we're not in a better place with the pandemic now than in previous months. In the last three months of the year, we averaged about 200 cases. There was this big spike in January. In February, we had 1,214 cases. That's over 1,000 cases more.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Please wrap it up.
Definitely not a time, I'm almost done, I'm almost done.
Okay, we have, we have many speakers.
Definitely not a time to start to remove preventative measures such as masking. So I'm just trying to envision what social change would take place if you prematurely removed the mask mandate. This would effectively mislead the community to believe the pandemic is over and COVID is gone and it's safe and no longer required to wear a mask, which is patently false.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
The CDC made this mistake early on in the pandemic resulting in conflicts with mask enforcement as the responsibility and rules are foisted upon those whose job is not to enforce. We need to maintain the current mandate from a district level to ensure compliance and safety. Please keep the mask mandate inside SCUSD classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next speaker. You have one minute.
Our next speaker is Crystal Dunn.
Go ahead, Ms. Dunn. You have one minute.
Hi, I'm here today because I want you guys to know that I took my kids out of your district. It is ridiculous what you're demanding of our students. My daughter is far behind. She's in first grade, and she is struggling, struggling. Over 300% have been a part of raising our children. With masks, have to deal with the fact that our children are being hurt. Title 21, Section EAU, says they cannot be required. They must be voluntary. Establishing schools' policies by guidelines of the EUA treatments is lawful. However, establishing requirements of emergency use is unlawful. And the use of both words and the same guidance policy is misleading, manipulative, coercive, and untruthful. Learning about this meeting and it becoming a requirement is why I remove my kids from your district.
Thank you.
And I will create a school that overrides your district so that there are people that can be mask-free and have their children totally in a better environment than what this district board is creating
Thank you.
For the 4,400 students that you guys have enforcing these mandates.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Our next speaker is Daniel Darby.
Go ahead, Mr. Darby. You have one minute. Go right ahead, Mr. Darby.
Hello?
Go ahead, Mr. Darby. You have one minute. Go right ahead.
Okay, good evening, board. I'm not sure why we're actually having this meeting because nothing has changed since our last board meeting last Thursday. I can't help but believe that the decision has already been made by this board because if you waited one more day, the SAC County data would have been released showing that we are in the low category. And apparently, according to your presentation on Thursday, And apparently, according to your presentation on Thursday, the CDC will be releasing their data showing that we're in the low category. It seems that this meeting date has been purposely set up such that we're in the medium category and we can make the decision easier. And just by you having your meeting and with the public participation through Zoom, you have to have the knowledge or certify that you, there's a high chance of probability of infection. So it seems like you have telegraphed your decision already quite clearly to the public, and I look forward to your decision. And but don't worry, you'll be making people mad one way or the other.
Thank you, Mr. Darby.
Regardless of whatever decision you make. So I look forward to hearing you keeping the mask mandate in place. And this meeting never actually had to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Ellen Yin Wyckoff.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Ellen Yin Wyckoff, and I'm a parent of a middle school student. And I'm one of the six hundred and thirty individuals who have signed the petition to keep the mask mandate. I'm speaking here tonight, as I have before, about my concerns in keeping our children and families safe during this pandemic. In our household, my daughter and I are caregivers for my elderly parents who have significant medical issues. And in fact, my mother was hospitalized two weeks ago for a major medical issue and had to have surgery. Because of my family's circumstances, we are still continuing to mask, even though everyone in our family is fully vaccinated and boosted. We cannot increase our risk for contracting COVID as this will impact our ability to fulfill our caregiving duties for my parents, especially now if my mother is recovering from major surgery. And we wouldn't be able to do this if we contracted COVID and were in quarantine. As you know, people who are vaccinated and boosted can still contract COVID. None of the science or data have disputed this. Masking is a critical element in reducing the risk of spreading COVID.
Thank you. If you could, please wrap it up.
Although many communities are loosening up their restrictions, I am urging you to keep the mask mandate in place. It is critical for the safety and health of our students, families like mine, and our communities. Thank you again for your supporting consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Ingrid Hutchins.
Go ahead, Ms. Hutchins. You have one minute.
Good evening. I understand the urge to pretend things are normal by ending the mask mandate. Let's be honest, masks aren't fun to wear, but they are an effective layer of protection against COVID. I think the Board needs to continue the mask mandate through at least the end of the school year. From what I've witnessed while watching these meetings, the trustees in this board would like to consider themselves advocates of equity. You use the correct words, talk about doing the work, but you fall short when it comes time to write resolutions, take votes, or do anything of substance to prove that your concern for equity didn't end after you memorized the vocabulary list. The PowerPoint that will be presented tonight is dependent upon county averages. That means there's a pretty good chance that one or more neighborhoods in our district could still have medium or even high community levels while the county average is low. Ending the mask mandate before all of our schools have safe community levels is the opposite of equity. Ending the mask mandate based upon county average means that you are willing to sacrifice the health of the students, families, and staff in some of our schools for the comfort of those who are privileged enough to attend schools in areas that have low community levels.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. If you could, please wrap it up.
If you're going to continue to pepper your comments with equity jargon, you need to prioritize the health of our students in every single school, not the wishes of families whose children are lucky enough to attend school in areas with low community spread. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Jean Shanley, and they have one minute from Christine Fiorentini.
So they have one minute for what?
From Christine Fiorentini.
Okay.
Who donated their time.
Jean, you have two minutes. Go right ahead.
Actually, I am wanting to use the time of Crystal Bayham, Sandra Halsted, Marie Perez, Amy Harrington, Christine Fiorentini, Marisa Mori, Christina McBurney Moss, and Matt Perrin.
Okay, I lost track of all that, but I think that's eight minutes.
Crystal Bayham, Sandra Halsted, Marie Perez, Amy Harrington, Christine Fiorentini, Marisa Mori, Christina McBurney Moss, Matt Perrin, and then myself.
Okay, you got ten minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the emotion that I hear from a lot of people tonight. I understand it's a, it's a sensitive topic that's very personal for people because they are worried about their health and their family and particularly vulnerable people they have in their household. So I would like to just kind of try to focus here on the science, starting at the global level. So there is no global authority for face masks. As a preliminary matter, top global authorities denounce masking for children under six years of age. The World Health Organization and the United Nations Children's Fund state that children under six should not mask. The European Center for Disease Prevention and Control does not recommend mask use for children in primary school. Even Australia and New Zealand, two countries with some of the most severe COVID restrictions in the world, do not subject children to masking. Similarly, Denmark, Ireland, Poland, Germany, Netherlands, Switzerland, Hungary, Finland, Norway, Iceland, Sweden, and the United Kingdom do not mask children. One of the many reasons for Britain's refusal to mask children was that the potential harm exceeds the potential benefits because seeing faces is important for the social development and interaction between people. British officials recognized this longstanding truth and chose not to impose such a dangerous requirement on its children to avoid a generation of children disabled in the coming years. The British Department of Education, which governs England, Scotland, Wales, and Northern Ireland, does not require elementary or school children to mask. They also ran a government studies after its decision not to mask, which showed that infection rates in schools did not exceed the was by multiple introductions or infections likely acquired from the outside. And they were right. Their fears were confirmed in a 2021 Brown study, Brown University study that attributes twenty-three percent overall cognitive decline since 2020 in children ages zero to five due to nation of mask-wearing and distancing and remote learning. So American authorities now also do not support mask-wearing. While the U.S. has been one of the only countries masking its children in the last few weeks of 2021, several U.S. authorities came out admitting that masks are useless facial decorations and not appropriate for Omicron, Delta, Alpha, or any of the previous variants because we are dealing with something that is airborne. This falls in line with the admissions of the Food and Drug Administration that surgical masks do not provide antimicrobial or antiviral protection and cannot be used to prevent or reduce infection. And children should not wear N95 masks. OSHA's admission, made an admission that neither cloth nor surgical masks are designed to nor can protect against or airborne pathogens, particularly respiratory viruses. And there's a disclaimer on surgical mask boxes that warns that they will not provide any protection against COVID-19, coronavirus, or any other virus. Wearing an ear-lip mask does not reduce the risk of contracting any disease or infection. Regarding cloth masks, as we stated, they are useless facial decorations that are inappropriate to prevent transmission of SARS-CoV-2, whatever the variant. These findings are the reason why the district and others have updated their mask guidelines, saying, you know, it's not best to wear these cloth masks and trying to encourage people to wear these N95 masks. Surgical masks similarly do not protect against airborne pathogens, particularly viruses, and do not prevent or reduce infection. This is due to their loose fit between the surface of the mask and your face in general, but especially in children, which does not provide complete protection for germs and contaminants and does not meet the district's good-fit requirement. While surgical masks may be effective at blocking splashes or large particle droplets encountered in surgery, they do not filter or block very small particles in the air that may be transmitted by coughs and seizures. This is why the box warrants will not provide any protection against COVID or any other virus and does not reduce the risk of contracting any disease or infection. Furthermore, it is often stated that masks don't have much benefit or don't have any downsides. And this is not true. In the WHO, World Health Organization, June 2020 guidance, right out of the box, right out of the gate, they listed in their Guidance on Masks a litany of potential harms and disadvantages. Self-contamination due to the manipulation of the mask, touching the mask with contaminated hands, contamination when it's wet or soiled, potential headache, breathing difficulties, depending on the type of mask used, facial lesions, irritable dermatitis, worsening acne, difficulties with communicating clearly, potential discomfort, false sense of security. I love this one. Because we hear it from just about everybody who's been in favor of masks tonight. This false sense of security, oh, I need to wear this mask because it's going to, it's one of the main things we're doing to protect us. It is not. The science does not support that, and it causes people to, to feel that they are secure when they are not. Poor compliance with mask-wearing, in particular by young children, waste management issues, difficulty communicating for people with disabilities or deaf people, and disadvantages for wearing them, especially for children and developmentally challenged persons, and especially problems wearing them with people who have asthma, chronic respiratory breathing problems, or people who are living in hot and humid environments. Right in the WHO guidance, they state, "At the present time, the widespread use of masks by healthy people in the community setting is not supported by high quality or direct scientific evidence, and there are potential benefits and harms to consider." So this is always something that should be a weighing of the pros and the cons. Someone had mentioned previously that this is about personal freedom or mental health. No, no, it's not. It's about the fact that they do not actually stop viral transmission, and they are causing very real restrictions in development. Recently, the CDC had to reduce their language development threshold standards because they are seeing young children with severe development problems. Regarding the risk of breathing...
Ms. Shanley, we lost you. Ms. Shanley, are you able to hear us? Okay, we can wait and see if we can get her back. We'll give her three, three minutes if we can get her back. And next speaker.
The next speaker is Jessica Pearson.
Go ahead, Ms. Pearson.
Hi, I'm the parent of a first grader in the district, and I have a four-year-old. And I'm asking for you to keep indoor masking for now and reconsider the policy at the end of the school year. My seven-year-old is a typical kid, and she complains daily about a lot of things, but wearing a mask at school is not one of them. Public health practices at SAC City Schools do not exist in a vacuum. They have ripple effects throughout our community, as you know. If the Board weakens testing and vaccination requirements and masking goes away or becomes optional, my kid faces daily possible exposure, as do me and my husband and my unable-to-get-vaccinated four-year-old and all of his preschool classmates. Failure to mitigate COVID at this time through all available reasonable and proven strategies will lead to more infections and cause additional hardships for students and their working parents, usually mothers, and especially those who don't have the benefit of telework or paid leave. I really look forward to a time when it's safe for kids to unmask. This isn't forever, but please don't lift mask mandates yet. Reconsider in a few months at the end of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is John Myers.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. I'm a parent of four students, two of them at SAC City Unified. Firstly, I'm really grateful the Board is considering a logical path to making masks optional. So thank you. However, I do strongly request that you reconsider the staff's proposal to use CDC county-level approach as, as your gating metric. The CDC calculates this county, this county risk based on factors such as hospital admissions and available inpatient hospital beds and case rates and other things. These factors are not currently impacted, and they have little to do with schools and children who represent a very small fraction of community spread and hospitalization. With this CDC-based approach, SAC City will again be an outlier among local districts, just like last spring. Worse, our kids' ability to unmask will be on an unknown timetable and at the mercy of hospital metrics around the county that have little to do with SAC City.
Thank you. If you could, please wrap it up.
So I just ask that the Board, you know, make a decision, pick a date that, that everybody's comfortable with, and, and let's move forward. Let's not get wrapped up in, 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 you know, these CDC metrics if we can. So thank you.
Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Justine Hearn.
Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I'll be taking Michael Bedard's time as well.
Okay, you got two minutes. Go ahead.
Thanks. I'm speaking tonight in support of maintaining the district's current masking requirements. I am one of the over six hundred people who signed the petition in support of retaining mask mandates. Though I'm also looking forward to the day when we can leave our masks at home until community transmission rates are lower and vaccines for children are more effective, masks may now be the most effective tool we do have to protect our kids, school staff, and their families from COVID. Recent research has indicated that while the vaccine protects against severe illness, it's not effective in reducing transmission rates for kids aged five to eleven. And of course, we know kids bring germs home to family members who may not be able to vaccinate or who are immunocompromised. Children are also not the only group affected by this policy in schools. Our teachers and staff will be impacted, and of course, they all have families and community members as well. We know that masks work. According to a CDC study published just today, school districts that required masks this last fall saw significantly fewer coronavirus cases than those where masks were optional. Making masks optional now with the Omicron variant still within our community could send us back to the chaos and uncertainty we experienced over the winter if we have another surge, with extensive absenteeism among students and staff. Finally, mask mandates do have public support. As reported by the SACB, sixty-one percent of parents approve of requiring masks for students, teachers, and staff in schools this year. And you've probably seen and heard a petition circulated by district parents now has over six hundred signatures and counting in support of continuing masking in our schools. Please continue with this mandate and the regular testing that we've talked about before at our schools to help reduce the spread of COVID and keep everyone in our community healthy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hearn. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Justin McCoy.
Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you. I will stick to my one minute.
Thank you. Nope, did we lose Justin? Uh-oh. We lost Justin. Oh, there you are. Okay, go right ahead, Justin.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Wonderful. Although I am one of the six hundred families that is prepared to speak tonight on behalf of, in support of mask precautions, I have changed what I wanted to say because although my wife is a school district teacher who is at high risk due to being a tuberculosis survivor, and although I am at high risk due to serious chemical burns of my lungs, we don't want you to consider us or what bringing COVID home might do to us, even though my wife is in the classroom without good ventilation or the support she had been promised. Instead, we want you to consider COVID survivors. Just recently, Senator Tim Kamen of Virginia introduced legislation to start, to begin studying long COVID effects. In our family, we know two people who are now living with long COVID. Both of them are now diagnosed with lifelong disabilities. One is a forty-year-old salon owner. She owns a popular salon downtown, or she did. She is now forced to sell it and retire because she cannot remain on her feet for more than an hour. That makes it impossible for her to do her job. Another is a fifty-two-year-old member of our family who has been an arborist for as long as we've known him.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
He is no longer able to even review a single tree, never mind supervise a cutting or a planting. He can't even have the energy to go and tell you whether or not your tree is healthy. We don't even begin to know the long-term effects of long COVID on survivors that are children.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
So we ask you not to roll the dice with our children's health when we can't even begin now to understand the long-term effects on survivors, never mind their families who are at higher risk.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. The next speaker is Kelly Stout.
Thanks for your time. A community's number one priority is to lift up the underserved, not harm them. Our underserved population, including people of color, those with disabilities, and in the case of my school location, an ASD community that has had to remain unmasked to serve their needs. Many parents and caregivers of children in our community are at high risk, along with a lot of school-age kids who have younger siblings unable yet to qualify for a vaccine. Wearing a mask is a simple, selfless service to others. Our kids understand this. It's the adults with the problem. I'm here to continue to advocate for the mask mandate within our SCUSD community to protect our kids, our staff, our community, and our underserved until everyone who is able and willing can be vaccinated. Lastly, I want to express my support to our teachers and staff who are voting to strike. I am a single parent, and my kids will not press the picket line, even with the hardship this will put on my family. I support any and all things they need to get the respectful bargaining they deserve. I hope the Board and Mr. Aguilar hear parents loud and clear. We support the teachers and the SEIU, not your ridiculous attempts to continue to insult the people that are helping to raise our children.
Thank you, Ms. Stout. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Kevin Smith.
Go ahead, Kevin. You have one minute.
Thank you. I'm the parent of two elementary school students in the district. I'm one of the over six hundred parents that signed the petition asking you to keep the mask mandate in place. It's unfortunate that the lack of leadership, both at the federal and state level, has put the Board in this position. We are still in the midst of a pandemic that is killing an average of one hundred and forty-one Californians a day, and removing mask mandates in any indoor setting is dangerous. Fortunately, you have been given the opportunity to step up and show the courage so sorely lacking at other levels of leadership. I implore you to keep the mask mandate in place. Masks are one of the most effective tools we have. We must do everything we can to keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Lisa Tordos.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm one of the over 600 parents who signed the petition that was sent to you. I hope you've read it. It goes without saying that masks were an important step to getting kids back in the classroom. And depending on which statistics you choose to look at, you can see that while transmission rates are lower, significantly lower, they're still high. And yes, as someone else said, I would love to pretend that COVID is gone. I would love to go maskless. And I want my kids to also, but not at risk of infecting teachers, other kids that can't be vaccinated, just because mine are and can be, doesn't mean that other people aren't.
Thank you. If you could please wrap it up.
And I ask you to please consider keeping the mask mandate in place until the end of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Marissa Morashita.
Go ahead, Marissa.
Hi, I gave my time to Jean Shanley.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Phineas Lurch.
No. We don't. Yes? Okay, go right ahead. Phineas, go right ahead. Okay, nobody's there. Okay, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Shonda Wesley.
Hi, Shonda. Welcome. You have one minute.
I'm one of the over 600 people who signed the petition to keep the mask mandate. Simply put, dropping indoor masks is neither safe nor equitable. According to a CDC study published today, school districts that require masks saw significantly fewer cases than those where masks were optional. Another issue is equity. SAC City kids who are English-language learners, low-income students, and foster youth are at greater risk of eliminating masking requirements due to their low vaccination rates. We provided a graph on the petition so you could see who will actually be hurt by this. And parents support the indoor mandate. SAC B reported 61% support, and there are now nearly 650 at the time of this meeting who have signed the petition. Once masks are made optional, it will take a lot of time and discussion to bring them back for the next variant. If masks are eliminated, many of us will pull our kids out of school during the next surge, costing the district ADA. This district has bent over backwards for people who wanted their kids back in school but refused to vaccinate or to test. And now they don't want to wear masks.
Please wrap it up.
I don't care about you all, but I don't reward my kid when they throw a tantrum. Those of us who follow the rules, put safety first for our families and our community, continue to get sidelined. It's time to step up, do the right thing. There are only 63 actual days of school left. We can do this.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley.
Keep your masks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Rachel Catan.
Go ahead, Ms. Catan.
Hi, thank you. I'm a parent of two young children, and I am speaking on behalf of the children who are adversely affected by wearing the masks, including my son, who has suffered from headaches and bellyaches, facial irritations. I also represent a group of parents and teachers in the Natomas area, where we have parents reporting children who have had night terrors, speech delays, multiple social-emotional issues. We have high schoolers reporting how they are happy to hide behind their masks. They don't have to interact with other people. They are now isolated into cliques of three and four students, and this is affecting our children. And it's important that we are recognizing that and continuing to mask these children where they are at
Thank you, Ms. Catan, if you could please wrap it up.
a statistical zero risk of being harmed by COVID is ridiculous. Cloth masks are useless facial decorations that are inappropriate to prevent the transmission of SARS-CoV-2 or whatever variant. Surgical masks similarly do not protect against airborne pathogens, particularly viruses, and do not prevent or reduce infection. This is due to their loose fit between the surface of the mask and their face. In general, especially in children, which does not provide complete protection from germs and other contaminants, it does not meet a good-fit requirement.
Thank you.
Surgical masks may be ineffective at blocking splashes and large particle droplets encountered in surgery, but they do not filter or block very small particles in the air that may be transmitted by coughs and sneezes. This is why the surgical mask boxes warn that they will not provide any protection against COVID-19 or any other virus. They do not reduce the risk of contracting any disease or infection. So, I implore you to think about the children and not continuing to
Thank you, Ms. Catan.
harm them socially, emotionally, and academically, further their learning loss, furthering their attachment to these masks
Thank you, Ms. Catan.
that they are afraid to drop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ian Perkins.
Go ahead, Ian. Are you there, Ian?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
Gotcha. So, this is coming from a concerned member of the public to the admin at CERN, the superintendent, and the SAC City Unified Board members. I go to multiple schools daily, and what I see is happy children playing, eating, talking, jumping, and shouting, and all of this within inches of each other without masks on. This happens at lunchtime, recess, in the halls, and yes, in the classroom. Viruses don't stop being dangerous so our kids can frolic and eat. This can't be the worst pandemic ever, except at 11:30 because that's lunchtime. Even if we continue with the masking, a thinly veiled piece of cloth isn't magic. There's a certain level of cognitive dissidence you have to subject yourself to in order to feel that these vaccine and mask mandates should continue in spite of what common sense tells you. Think about how this affects the children's social and physical development. Remove the unlawful and unnecessary masking, testing, and vaccine mandates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Taylor Kayata.
Go ahead, Taylor. You have one minute.
I'm also one of the 600 who signed the petition you received. Please keep the mask mandate in the classroom and in close-contact settings until the end of the school year. Kids need consistency around masking requirements. Removing and possibly reinstating masking is a confusing message for our kids. We should wait to remove the mandate until we are more certain that we can remove it for good. Like most people who mask diligently, I'm not a fan of masks. We mask to protect our larger community. We mask because some people don't have the personal choice to be exposed to COVID without risking serious complications. Schools are not just another place where people can choose to go or not. They are places where our kids go to learn, see their friends, and become the leaders of tomorrow. They need to be accessible to all. Forcing kids who would disproportionately be affected into independent study is inequitable and not the answer. I'm anxious to take my mask off and to make his mask off when it's safe. But let's keep the mask mandate until we are more certain that it is safe and that doing so is the right call. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Teresa Weaver.
Go ahead, Ms. Weaver.
Hi, I am a community member and a concerned aunt. You have a student in the district. I'm strongly in favor of approving the mandate for masking to protect our children's freedom and right to a safe learning environment and education. We are California's capital, and we should be leading the way behind science using evidence-based best practices. Healthcare workers have stepped up to beat COVID. Now it's our turn to take responsibility and step up to do our part and wear a mask. We need to set the example to protect the health and safety of our amazing teachers and the children who depend on us for implementing a mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Tracy Mistry.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Hello, I speak as a parent of two elementary students in the district. Thank you for taking the time to evaluate our district's needs within the context of the state masking changes. And I respectfully request that you continue requiring masks indoors. If equity and keeping kids in classrooms is the objective, then it makes no sense to discontinue masking, knowing that our most at-risk families are disproportionately impacted by COVID infection and can least afford to miss class days due to illness or quarantine. I want life to be normal. No masks, no distancing, but it's not. We are still fighting a deadly virus. Everyone can agree that having students on campus is key, but ignoring those families at higher risk of COVID and asking them to choose between distance learning or the risk of in-person learning is no better than saying that unvaccinated individuals have to go to IS instead, which the district has not been willing to do. Please continue the indoor mask mandate through the end of the school year and then reevaluate for fall for the protection of our students, staff, and all of their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Phineas Lurch is back online.
Okay, go ahead, Phineas. Go ahead, Phineas.
Wait, can you hear me? Did you unmute? Yes. Can anyone hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Go right ahead.
All right. My name is Phineas Lurch. I'm in fourth grade at Leonardo da Vinci School, and I would like the mask mandate to continue as it is because I've heard a lot of people on their speeches say that masking, like, hasn't been working. And I like to say that me and my sister have been, like, me, I've been masking when, like, my sister, my sister got COVID once, and she came home, and we took care of her. And with masking, she got better, and none of us got COVID. I, myself and my family, or myself and my family have been masking and are all vaccinated. And I'd like to talk about how this is affecting all the students. Like, so, in... Go ahead.
Go ahead, Phineas, if you could please wrap it up.
Tell them about, tell them about your classroom. Okay. I already thought that taking the mask off during recess is a big jump because this COVID, COVID has developed Omicron, and that is hard to detect because it doesn't show, like, any symptoms. We, and it can go over vaccines, so it's kind of hard to tell. And allergies are also affecting because it is like allergy season now, which is making it seem like some people have COVID when they don't. And I've seen a lot of people after December, Christmas break, where had a lot, had COVID. And I was in the classroom with a lot of people, and I had exposure to them. But by wearing my mask, I didn't get it, and I'm safe. And a lot of people have been saying that kids are not at risk of dying to the virus.
Thank you, Phineas, if you could please wrap it up.
All right. So, they've been talking about how they are not at risk of dying, but these kids are coming back to their homes, giving it to their parents, and it's giving them the COVID-19, and they are going to stores, and it's just a chain reaction. It keeps going. And I want to be able to go to my grandparents' house now, and I don't want to have them at risk. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, Phineas. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Allison Jones.
Go ahead, Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones, are you there? Maybe I'm mute. She's off mute. Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Jones. Oh, she's still on mute. If you could please take yourself off mute. No? Okay. Next speaker.
We have Jean Shanley back online.
Okay. Ms. Shanley, I believe you still have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you so much. So, I wanted to just point out too that N95 masks and comparable respirators are dangerous and highly regulated medical devices that don't meet California's K through 12 mask requirements. Section 1910.134 of Title 29 of the Code of Federal Regulations classifies N95 respirators as particulate-filtering facepiece respirators, not masks. As a result, the respirators do not satisfy and actually violate CDPH's K through 12 mask requirement. Furthermore, due to serious safety risks and lack of research, the FDA states the N95 masks are not designed for, do not offer complete protection to, and should not be used by children. And CDPH states children should not use N95 masks because they do not fit properly and can impede breathing. And these guidance statements were made in connection with the wildfire frequently asked questions. So, it is worth noting that where N95 and comparable masks are permitted for use by adults, these adults must first obtain a medical clearance, training on how to use and fit and test to ensure the respirator is properly fit and fitted and can be safely used. In addition, OSHA recommends that users take frequent breaks every hour or so from the respiratory hazard. This is because according to the CDC, the N95 user is always going to experience some level of difficulty breathing, citing a lengthy list of physiological side effects, including increase in blood CO2 levels after only one hour of use. So, in some, the cloth masks are not effective, surgical masks are not effective, and the N95s are not recommended. They're unhealthy for children to use. So, I understand people are, feel insecure because there's, you know, it's been stressful, but masks are not fixing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shanley. That the last speaker?
Yes, that was our final speaker.
I'm sorry?
Yes, that was the last speaker.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, we're moving into Adam 3.0, Special Presentation 3.1, Update and Approval of COVID-19 Vaccination Testing and Masking Requirements for Students and Staff. Hi, Ms. Flores.
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent, and members of the board. I'm Victoria Flores, serve as your Director of Student Support and Health Services. And tonight I have with me our Chief Human Resources Officer, Conti McCarron. And we are here with our COVID-19 update recommendations around vaccination, testing, and face masking. Next slide, please. So, we're going to jump right into our vaccination and testing recommendation. So, with our high compliance rate, and we shared this at our last board meeting, we are nearly at 94%. And you'll notice this number does keep shifting. Of our students that are either vaccinated or they've made that choice to register for COVID-19 testing, we are recommending the following, that we align with the California State Student COVID-19 Vaccine Requirement Deadline while we continue to implement the vaccine or testing resolution. And what that means in practical terms is we will continue to do that routine surveillance testing, continue all of our vaccination efforts, and continue that outreach to those last little bit of students that have not yet done either. So, given the constraints of our independent study program, we would, we are recommending that we allow all students to remain in in-person learning while we continue those outreach efforts. We have a little over 2,000 students left to reach, and every day that number is dropping little by little. We also want to just reinforce that we will continue all of our mitigation measures throughout this year, summer into 22, 23 school year, to really maintain our focus on health and safety and our ability to respond to any changes and conditions. And so, with that, I will turn it over to Chief Human Resources Officer, Conti McCarron, to take you through the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Victoria. And as we look at the staff noncompliant rates that you see there, you'll notice that we are down significantly from where we began. You might recall...
You might recall that when we started, we had about 1,400 individuals on this list. And through diligence by the team, by supervisors, and by staff themselves in getting the information forward, we have four, as you can see, teachers. Two of those are classroom teachers, one elementary, one secondary. And then two that are non-classroom teachers that remain, as well as our campus monitor, three new duties. And then there are some per diem individuals. So we will continue to work on this daily. We are reaching out and trying to answer questions, provide updates, do what we can to help ensure people realize what might happen and also what they have in terms of options. Next slide, please. So where we are, given the, the board resolution that was put forward, is we are prepared to send notices of unpaid leave, aligned with agreements with SCIU, Teamsters, and TCS. But what this means is those letters would go out Friday for an effect taking, taking place on Monday, the 14th. That being the first day for that, um, that unpaid leave of absence to be processed until they are either compliant, either through the vaccination or through the exemption process. But again, we will continue to work every single day until we get to that point. We're working closely with principals and administrators to identify how the coverage will take place for those positions I showed you on that slide previous and have some pieces in place to be able to maintain services moving forward. Next slide, please. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Victoria.
Thank you so much. So as we turn to discussing our masking recommendation, we really wanted to take you back to what we shared at our last board meeting and some recent updates that, that are really impacting our thinking. So we are two years into this pandemic and we are shifting the way that we measure COVID-19 in our community. Um, you know, you can remember we all stayed home early on in this pandemic to really protect the health of our hospital system and not overwhelm that system. But we do have many more resources at our disposal now. Namely, vaccine, number one, is, is widely available for anyone five and older. And then we have a lot more testing capability. I'm just, you know, funny, harkening back to two years ago, at the very beginning of this pandemic, I think our entire county had around 20 tests that they had to really, you know, kind of strategize how they would do this. Our own district just last week has provided 20,000 tests to just our district. So how far we've come and, you know, why we, we can start to change the way that we're looking at our, at this pandemic. So the CDC has broken this down into some kind of simple three classifications, looking at three different metrics. And so what you have here on your screen in front of you is kind of the breakdown of how they've applied these community levels. So you'll see they've got a low or green metric, a medium or yellow, that kind of caution. And then this orange is the high metric. And so the first thing we look at is COVID-19 cases per 100,000 residents over seven days or over a week. And this is a pretty basic one. You're either fewer than 200 or more than 200. If you're fewer than 200, you can see that you can reach that low classification. If you're over 200, you're automatically a medium or high. The second metric they're looking at is new COVID-19 hospital admissions per 100,000 residents for seven days. You can see if you're under 10, you'll meet that green or low metric for the county. If you're between 10 and 19.9, you stay in that medium range and anything over 20 is high. And then lastly, they're looking at the COVID inpatient bed utilization. So of all of the percentage of bed utilization, how much of it is COVID-related? And you can see again, under 10% of your hospital beds are COVID patients, you reach that low metric. 10 to 14.9% puts you in the medium and over 15% puts you in the high. So Mr. Flores, if you'll forward twice for me, we've got an animation here. You can see right now that Sacramento County is still sitting in the medium metric. So last week, when we looked to update, they update this every week, we were still in the medium. And let me explain why. So these orange numbers on the side are the data where Sacramento County is sitting. So you can see for our cases, we're at 114.43. We are well below that 200 metric. So we meet the, the low metric there. But this middle one, new COVID hospital admissions, we are at 11.8. So we haven't met that 10, you know, threshold. We're right there in the middle in that medium range, in that 10 to 19.9 range. Our COVID inpatient bed utilization is at 9.9%. So we just squeaked under that 10% and that would put us in that low range as well. But what you'll notice is we're still in the medium range. And it's because if one of those metrics is in that higher rating, that's where you stay. We have been forecasting, and thank you to school nurse Stephanie Fox, who was diving into this data today. And, you know, we, we do think, and it looks like all intention is Sacramento County may move into that low metric this Thursday when they update this data. But of course, we will have to wait and see. Next slide, please. We also wanted to bring you back to some of the CDPH updates that were made and the, the presentation that Dr. Galey gave. And again, you can see that the CDPH is talking about these off-ramps or how we start lifting COVID mitigation measures tied to the hospital impact. So you can see that direct link back to the way the CDC is starting to shift, how they're measuring COVID spread. And then that on-ramp, really looking at test positivity and community transmission. So again, it's that case rate. And as our cases start to go up, we would look at, you know, putting back mitigation measures because we know case rate goes up first, then we see the impact to our hospital system. The, the CDPH also reaffirmed, you know, we want to keep schools open, um, you know, for safe in-person learning for families who have made that choice. Um, we want to have low risk in schools. We want to remain prepared to, you know, adjust to changing conditions. And then they also did reaffirm their, you know, continue, continued priority to provide testing to schools. And that's been a real critical, key component of our strategy here in Sac City. Next slide, please. So again, I'm just sharing this slide again that you can see as of March 12th. So we're not there yet, but it's coming, that masking will move from the requirement to a strong recommendation. So this means everyone can continue to mask should they wish to or need to or just feel more comfortable to. It's moving though from that requirement to the strong recommendation. Masking is still required in several areas like healthcare settings, long-term care settings or shelters, detention facilities, or in transportation hubs as well. So just some reminders, we'll still see, you know, masking required in those areas. But again, masking strongly recommended, so we can continue to mask if that is, is, you know, what we, we want to continue to do. Next slide, please. We also spoke with you and our community about, we needed to know what Cal OSHA was going to do and, you know, how that would align. Um, and we've seen before where CDPH has shifted requirements, but it, Cal OSHA didn't quite align. And so it's created some difficulties for workplaces or schools. Um, and so this was a real wondering for us. And we did see on March 2nd that Cal OSHA has now aligned. And this comes straight from the Emergency Temporary Standards FAQs page, where they're asking that question, you know, how does CDPH's February 28th guidance impact the ETS? And they have lifted that emergency temporary standard that required unvaccinated workers to wear face covering. So they are no longer required to wear face coverings indoors, you know, workplaces or vehicles. Um, it's shifting as well to, you know, masks being recommended. Of course, employers still have to provide face coverings and ensure they're worn when required by orders from CDPH. And in addition, they remind us that we have to make face coverings readily available regardless of vaccination status and of course, without fear of retaliation. We have been doing that all along and still continue, you know, and plan to do that. Like we shared, anyone can still mask should they, you know, choose to do that. Next slide, please. We were also waiting to see what our Sacramento County Public Health would release and establish. They, they let us know that they were looking at some revised guidance. And they did release that guidance yesterday on Monday, on March 7th. They also just reaffirmed that there will be no statewide or local mandate requiring masking. So Sat County Public Health is also shifting to that strong recommendation. They also remind us though that, you know, this is, this is, uh, we need to respect each other's choices around masking and those decisions whether to mask or not to mask. They also issued some interim guidance for K-12 schools. So they've pared that decision forest down to just one tree. Um, and it really does reflect that shift from that individual level contact tracing down to just notifying groups of a likely, you know, likely contacts of an exposure and recommending testing. This really aligns with the shifts in our contact tracing protocols that we had to make during the Omicron surge. Um, the other, you know, pre-significant modification is when students are exposed to COVID, they may continue attending school as long as they are symptom-free. So it no longer, there, there's no longer a differentiation between exposure at school or in the community. It's pretty much any exposure regardless of vaccination status. They can keep coming to school as long as they're symptom-free. So we really do come back, back down to one of our very first basic tenants, which was stay home sick, please, right? Stay home if you're symptomatic. Let yourself get well. COVID test, and then of course, you can come back. They did include a caveat, there is one, you know, key piece that is staying in effect. And that is if unvaccinated household close contacts must quarantine. So if someone in my household were to become, you know, were to contract COVID and I was not yet vaccinated, I would have to remain home on quarantine. Um, so we do want to know about those cases. We're continuing to provide that guidance throughout our community, um, helping our families navigate all of that. They also moved from, um, testing is recommended on day five, it's no longer required. So shifting away from that modified quarantine requirement to just really recommending it. But again, um, you know, individuals can make that choice. They also note though that staff must follow Cal OSHA requirements for quarantine. We still have all of those in play that are a little bit different than this guidance. Next slide, please. So, you know, we've looked at the, the federal or the, you know, the national level, state, our local county. And so now we look at what are other districts doing around this decision, um, both here locally, but also across the state. You know, we've done things similar than, than some of the other districts across the state. So locally, we see that, you know, many of the big districts in our area have already announced to their community that they will be aligning with the CDPH and SCPH guidance and they will be lifting their mask requirement and shifting to that strong recommendation around masking on March 12th. That happens to be a Saturday, but you know, if there's a school event or something happening. Um, we also see Davis Unified School District has established a different metric. So we're kind of looking at what else other districts are doing. They've indicated that on April 11th, they will be lifting their mask requirement and shifting to that strong recommendation over there in Yolo County. We see San Diego Unified also established a differentiated metric. They picked that low classification per CDC, so that green rating. When their county hits that metric, they will be also looking to lift their masking requirement. Um, and I can share, they did hit that green metric. Um, and I imagine they're looking at making that announcement. San Francisco Unified School District is also looking at doing an additional metric. In fact, they are meeting tonight, the same as you all, um, and listening to their staff recommendations around making this decision. San Francisco is also in that green CDC zone. And they're looking at a little bit of a differentiated response on lifting the metric immediately for middle school and high school and establishing a date, I think, early April, um, for TK through fifth grade. But of course, their board is going to discuss and debate the same as we will tonight. So we'll see what they do. Um, Oakland Unified is also under consultation, but I will note, Alameda County Public Health, um, has issued their announcement that they are also lifting their masking requirement and shifting to strongly recommended. They also sit in the medium, you know, range per CDC right now. And then Los Angeles Unified School District is also under consultation. However, their county public health also lifted their mask requirement, shifting to that recommendation. And they set the metric of moving to the green rating with CDC, which they did this past week, which is why they lifted theirs. Um, so this just kind of gives you an idea of, of sort of the, the array of responses that districts have made to this, this decision. Next slide, please. So we get down even more granular, right? What does our data tell us? And I've shared this slide with you all before in our community. And we just keep adding weeks, weeks on. So we can start to really see the trends and really see what's going on locally. Uh, we've heard, you know, those concerns. So this first graph is the number of tests that we are providing by the week. And so you can see those numbers are all pretty high. We, we saw record numbers of testing when we came back in, in January, lines wrapped around buildings. Um, but we are pretty much maintaining where I roughly said we would, around 20,000 tests per week. You see a couple of higher weeks in there because we did those at-home COVID testing kits for those two, three-day weekends. So we saw a bump in our reporting. Last week, we did, you know, a little over 20,000 tests. That's probably where we will sit. So we know we've had a consistently high rate of testing. When you look at the blue graphs, this is our number of positive tests for staff and students. You see this nice decline, right? As the Omicron wave has subsided, we've watched our case rates come down. In fact, this last week, we had a 0.3% positivity rate for our staff and our students with those choosing to test with us. So we are very heartened by this data. You then look at the orange side, and this is the number of positive COVID cases that were present at school or work. So not everyone tests with us, but they do report those cases. We have really good, strong protocols around that. Again, you see that same, uh, you know, decrease in the number of positive cases coming way, way back down. Looking at our numbers, we are sitting at about early July of last year, you know, before Delta hit and we all thought, you know, we would be, um, really, you know, moving kind of back to normal. And so that is really heartening to see those trends. Next slide, please. So looking at our rationale, as we take into consideration all of this data, you know, all of the, the guidance that we can, you know, read. Um, you know, we have always followed our CDC, CDPH, and/or SCPH guidance. Um, and their current guidance right now is to shift to strongly recommending masking. We also look at this time issue that we've done before. So this two-week window that really aligns with a previous approach that we've taken for lifting restrictions. So you can remember not too long ago, you know, looking at extracurriculars, field trips, and outdoor masking and setting that two-week, you know, kind of benchmark before we moved forward with those to really monitor and confirm that downward case trend. But secondary to that was really this ability to have that time to navigate the transition for changing requirements. Um, I just kind of as a footnote wanted to share, we do have a district collaboration underway with our SEL department to provide some trauma-sensitive, social-emotional learning activities for both employees and students as we navigate all of these transitions. Not just, you know, maybe this masking decision, but anything else that's to come. I also want to say, you know, we remain committed to responding to changing conditions, whether they become better or they become worse. You know, the need for masks or other mitigation measures may come and go, much like the need for a warm jacket in winter or even sort of this, this transition time between winter and spring where one, you know, week can be really warm and, and then we get another cold front. And what I want to point back to is that we really showed our community how we can pivot and respond to these changes, like we did with the field trips and extracurriculars. We were really excited to release that and allow it kind of in late fall, I think, end of November, December. However, when January came around and Omicron hit, we really quickly had to put a temporary pause. And then of course, we were able to lift that, uh, just recently. And I know everyone was really excited about that. We also have a lot more tools now and we will continue to use them to the fullest extent. Vaccination is one of our best tools. And, you know, we have heard from, you know, many public health experts and, um, even, you know, public comment, our vaccines have been very protective against severe illness. against severe illness, hospitalization and death. Um, our health screening, that is still one of our best me- measures. Please stay homesick, take care of yourself, take care of your student. Come back when you're feeling better and you're negative for COVID. Our testing is another real key, um, you know, cornerstone of our success strategy, whether it's because you're symptomatic, you've been exposed, or we're doing that routine surveillance testing weekly. Our enhanced ventilation measures, and then, of course, masks are widely available, including these higher-quality masks, if that's a choice, you know, that you would like to make, whether they're required or they're voluntary. Next slide, please. So our masking recommendation is, uh, to the board, so per current CDC metrics, when Sacramento County falls to that low or green level and remains there for two consecutive weeks, uh, we are recommending that SUSD align with the CDPH guidance for masking. We do want to call out that masking requirements would remain in effect for all staff, students and visitors until this metric is met. We also want to recommend that per those CDC metrics, moving into the high community level or any other state or local orders would trigger a return to indoor masking. And just want to put this out there that we would consider returning to masking if we entered that medium category, really depending on what was happening globally, nationally or locally. Really continuing to look at some of those yellow caution lights for when we might need to go back on that on-ramp. Next slide, please. So in summary, we are recommending that our student vaccination and, and testing deadline align with the California state requirement. Masks are still required until further notice for staff, for students, staff and visitors. Again, once CDC lists Sacramento County in that low category for two consecutive weeks, masks will be strongly recommended. We encourage everyone to continue to mask, but not required. Um, CDC county ratings are released weekly on Thursdays, typically kind of noonish or late afternoon. So the earliest we could align with CDPH to move to that masking recommendation based on our current projections, so we'll also kind of have to wait and see, is really looking at Monday, March 28th. And that would be because, you know, this week, March 10th, if we move into low, then we would learn on March 24th if we hit that, you know, second, you know, benchmark week. And we would then just do Monday as being sort of that clean start of shifting into our recommendation. I do just want to really focus that our mitigation measures will remain throughout the school year. Masks will be widely available, just like they are now, in all school and district spaces. We are asking our families and our staffs to please stay homesick and follow those return-to-school protocols, just like we've been doing for these two years. All of our testing remains in full effect, whether it's symptomatic, surveillance and exposure testing. We still have testing at every single school site, our district locations, our three um, regional testing centers, and we will continue to utilize those at-home COVID test kits. Um, all of our vaccination efforts continue in full force. And in fact, we're, we're ramping those up. And of course, our enhanced ventilation remains in effect. Next slide. So as we wind down and, and leave you, uh, you know, turning it back over to question and answer, we just wanted to summarize some of that rationale that we are following the CDC, CDPH and SCPH guidance to shift to strongly recommended for masking. Um, that we look at that two-week window and that aligns with our previous approach for lifting restrictions, really ensuring that we have that downward trend and we can still see that in our data. That we remain committed to responding to changing conditions, whether they get better and we get to do thing, fun things like go back to field trips or should they get worse and conditions change. And we also have more tools now and we will continue to use them to the fullest extent. And with that, that concludes our board presentation and I will turn it back over to the board.
Sorry, my mic was not on. Member Murawski.
Oh, okay. No, no worries. Oh, thank you, President Pritchett, and thank you, um, thank you, Victoria and Consey uh, for the presentation and the thoughtful, um, recommendations. So, um, I do have a couple of questions and I guess some comments. Um, first, I'll just ask, uh, just for some clarification around the, what does this mean for, for staff? Is it also, does it apply to students and staff? Um, that it would go to, um, recommended that each individual would decide on their own or?
For masking?
Yeah.
Correct. Yes, it would apply to both students and staff. So Cal OSHA did align with the CDPH. Um, and so that would shift from a requirement for staff and students to a strong recommendation.
Okay, okay, I see. Um, and, okay, thank you. And, um, and you, your understanding of the strong recommendation is, is that that was like an, at an individual level, but not to mandate it by, like a district or a school or something like that?
Correct. Yeah. So this is really that point in the pandemic. And this is what all of our public health experts are saying, where we have a lot of tools at our disposal. And so now we start to shift from public health orders and requirements that were designed to really protect our, our healthcare system to shifting to more of that, you know, personal, um, you know, decision and, and risk level kind of mitigation. We all are going to have varying, you know, risk tolerance or uh, concerns for the health of, you know, people that we care for, that live in our household or, you know, that we love. And, and so we can shift and, and make those decisions. Um, and one-way masking, or, you know, if I mask, but you choose not to, can still be very protective for, for me. Um, if that's the right choice for me and my family.
Okay, okay, got it. And then, um, a child with symptoms. Um, can you walk us through, like, what would happen then? Um, would they get tested for COVID right away with, or?
Yeah. So anyone who, you know, comes to school or work, and this happens all the time, right? I'm a parent, it happened to me. Um, you know, your, your kiddo, your student starts to not feel well. They start to cough or get a sore throat or, you know, whatever can happen. Um, so they are, um, taken from, you know, the classroom very kindly and we put them in the care room. And we look to see, do we have consent to provide that COVID testing? Our policy is to reach out to the parent guardian, let them know what's going on. Let them know we can offer COVID testing. I think like 98% of, you know, individuals say yes, please COVID test them. Regardless of how they test, they do still need to go home because they are still sick. We have seen individuals test negative there, but then sometimes later, as symptoms maybe evolve, they're, they have tested positive later. Of course, if, if symptoms resolve, there's no fever for 24 hours, they tested negative, they can return to work. That protocol is the same, no matter you're a staff, you're a student or you're a visitor.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's, that's very helpful. Um, so I guess in looking and listening to the recommendation, I really appreciate, you know, how you, you brought a thoughtful recommendation, not based on like an arbitrary date, but based on a metric that is objective and really, really is meaningful. Um, so I want to just, because I, I understand there's so, there's so much. I mean, we've all been through a lot over the last couple of years together, right? In this, in the system, there's a lot of trauma. I have it, we all have it. Um, there's a lot of also like attachment that I feel like I have, like emotional attachment to these mitigation measures that have kept us safe. Um, so I, I totally get it. And I also, you know, I hear folks who say, like, you know, we mask because we care about other people and we, you know, and, and these, and these sentiments really, they speak right to me as well. But I also think at some point, I mean, I know at some point the harms, um, which are, I mean, there are harms, right? With any mitigation measures, there are costs to it. Um, the harms will outweigh the benefits at some point. Um, and I, I think we have to be really careful, of those of us who are, you know, who care about being in community and protecting each other, we also have to be really careful about making, making it sort of a, a political statement or a part of our identity. And I think we really need to cue to the science, just like we've been saying along, um, along the whole way. So just to bring out some numbers, and I was kind of like doing some calculations as, as we were talking and looking at the numbers from Sacramento County. So I just wanted to share this with my colleagues because I thought it was pretty stunning. So on January 4th, we had in Sacramento County 5,050 cases. That was the highest number I saw. 5,000, okay, over 5,000. On February 26th, there were 82. So that is like a massive order of magnitude, 60 times difference, right? So that, that means the, the community risk from where we were to where we are now, and we're still going down, is, is 60 times different, right? So you're, it's 60 times lower than it was during the peak. So it really is something that I think we have, uh, the capacity as a system to respond to in real time. And I would, you know, I, so I do think, I do think the staff recommendation makes sense. Um, I do think also on the flip side, if we do start seeing, start seeing it go up again, I feel very comfortable with even giving staff the ability to implement it back. I don't think that that's a strong or hard thing to do. You know, I think it should just be like, you know, like a, an umbrella or, or a warm coat. Like, if we need to do it to respond to the changing conditions, then I think we should do it. So I just, um, I, I don't think this is about feelings or responding to tantrums or making a political statement. I think we really, I understand all of that is, i- is in the air, but I think we really need to look at the numbers and, and the risks and the benefits. And I think the staff recommendation makes sense. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Murawski. Member Villan, the member Phillips?
So, uh, I'll just start out, thank you, um, for being so diligent throughout these past two years. I know this has just been so challenging, um, and it's not an easy task, we all know this. So I, I kind of, you know, what, what more, Member Murawski have stated, that's initially what I felt. I understand, I hear both sides. Um, what we've said all along, we are not scientists, we are going to follow the guidelines that have been presented to us. And I know for myself, even my own daughter will probably still want to wear a mask. There are many folks that will continue to do that. Um, because I think we've all talked about they keep some warm in the morning, so there's a comfort level. But it's, we, we kind of need to make this as a generalized, this is up to you, your decision, and this is what we're recommending. So, um, I think, you know, our school district has done a wonderful job pivoting since March of 2020 and obviously will continue to do that. Um, the only thing that I am a little, you know, I want to make sure that for folks that are unvaccinated, you know, making sure that, you know, there's required testing, and I know there's that opt-out feature, but that does worry me a little bit. If we're going to be taking these steps, I want to make sure that we're doing, we're aligning with, uh, what recommendations that we've put forth before the board, before we're getting to this point. Um, yeah, I think, uh, like I said, the CDC, I looked at the dashboard today, you can see the positive. It's the decline that's been going for quite some time, so we're obviously in line with that. Um, I am looking forward, though, to moving past this, um, pandemic, just the last two years, what we've gone through and moving forward so we can start focusing on other items. And again, we've talked about this, it's going to be like a light jacket. If we have to put it back on, you know, we all need to be on board that that may happen. But I, I, I think we're, we're looking good and I think we've all done the work to get us here. So again, thank you. I'm, I'm very happy with these recommendations.
Thank you, Member Phillips. Member Phillips?
So, um, communities of Black and Latino are highly affected by COVID. They're also affected highly by the, uh, something MISC. Ms. Flores, I think you know what that is, a multi-inflammatory.
Syndrome.
Yeah. So my concern is that schools are considered to be institutions of learning. And we have children going from class to class in close contact. Um, same as is within our prison system, people moving about, close contact. Um, I realize that dropping a mask, mask mandate would help make people help, sorry, would help people feel more comfortable. But I just want to know for sure, um, the, the recommendation that we have is to continue with mitigation measures until CDH or CDPH um, comes to a different, different number, something that we can align with, right?
Yeah. So we will continue, you know, we will continue masking until whatever, you know, decision the board makes tonight, whether we lift that or not, we will continue our, our surveillance testing throughout the remainder of this school year, as well as all of our vaccination efforts, as well as making masks readily available and encouraging individuals, you know, to mask if that is something, um, you know, that, that makes them more comfortable or, or that, you know, they need to do for their own health or their own family.
So the, the earliest, and I'm just trying to make sure I have this understood, we are going to be considering keeping masking for the rest of the school year unless the California Department of Public Health comes to a different number. Sacramento number comes, comes lower or something. I'm trying to, trying to figure out if there's a difference between, um, the CDPH recommendation about if we're going to look at March 28th as being one of our dates, possibly to come back and review this again? Okay, so Superintendent Shaggy just said, no.
Yeah, no. Member Phillips, I, I would just point you and Mr. Flores, if you can, um, and certainly Ms. Flores, you can also interject. But what we're proposing, uh, Member Phillips, is that we utilize uh, the metrics that are shown, uh, on slide five. Um, uh, that'll come from CDC. Uh, at this time, we are still in the medium category, the ones that are up on the screen. We're still in the medium category. And we anticipate the strong possibility that we will hit the low category based on those three metrics there, the cases per 100,000, the new COVID hospital admissions and the COVID inpatient bed utilization. So those are the metrics that we're utilizing, or CDC is utilizing.
Are there any metrics that fit our school districts instead of just looking at the county?
No.
Okay. So I'm, and I'm just, I'm just, like I said, the underrepresented communities usually are, you're, you know, you're Black and Brown and, you know, marginalized and disenfranchised. And there's a whole group of folks who might not benefit from us lifting a mask mandate, so to speak. And those are the, the areas in our district that already have low vaccination rates. If we already have low vaccination rates, it would be somewhat foolish for us to give folks an opportunity to say, hey, I'm not going to wear my mask, or I'm gonna wear a mask. It just makes more sense for us to have, um, the mask held until at, at least the end of the school year. Um, but I'm, I'm just really concerned about the transmission rates and the illness rates in these areas. I think we really need to take into account the folks who have not called in, the people who have not made public comment. Um, and, and recognize that their numbers are not necessarily as pleasant, um, as the district a- as a whole. So I just want to make sure that we all kind of have an understanding that if we lift the mask, then we could really truly be hurting other communities who haven't had a say in this.
Part of, part of our, um, our proposal, uh, Member Phillips, is that we would not lift the mask immediately after we hit the lowest metric, um, which we anticipate could happen on Thursday, but that instead we would wait an additional two weeks to ensure, uh, that those rates continue for at least two weeks. Certainly, it is up to board discussion if you want to add additional metrics to the three that we are proposing to the board. Uh, we feel pretty confident about, uh, the metrics that are stated there. Um, uh, we thought that it was important, uh, as Member Murawski said, to use something that uh, is objective and that we can point to, uh, when establishing our proposal. Uh, so, um, and that it would apply, of course, to, to the entire district. So, and that it would apply, of course, to, to the entire district. I do want to just reiterate to the board and to our community, as Ms. Flores indicated, this, the, the proposal doesn't do away with all of the other mitigation factors that we have put in place. And those include, Ms. Flores, if you can clarify, but those include SAC County Public Health directives to us of informing them of unusual cases or high case rates at, at any of our schools as well. So, so there is an element beyond these metrics that we are also bound to report to SAC County Public Health, based on what you're mentioning, Member Phillips, that there could be situations where at individual schools, we might have to look into possible transmission within the school that are, that is coming from the community. And, and we would still be required to report that to SAC County Public Health.
And we know that many of the individual schools are part of groups of schools within certain areas.
Within communities, yes.
Right, so, so again, we're, I'm just, I just want to make sure that I'm clear so that, you know, the folks in the back can hear this, is that, I mean, it just seems to me that, like, we might be going off numbers that aren't necessarily clear, they're, they're for the county, their hospitalizations and transmission rates, but they're not speaking specifically to our student community. So I, while I understand all that, I, you know, like I said, I'm just trying to get an understanding as much as I can, but I just want to make sure that we understand if, if we're going to lift this, why can't we wait until the end of the school year? Why would we wait two weeks until the 28th and then have masks go back on if, if we have another surge? Why not just to the end of the school year?
Thank you, Member Phillips. Uh, member, student member Zhang.
Hi, um, thank you for the very detailed presentation, and I would like to just speak from the student perspective. I do not see why we would lift the mask mandate in the middle of the year. The recommended, uh, recommendation does make sense if we look at the data, but I feel like students are used to masking, and if we take away the mask mandate, the risk increases a lot, because if you strongly recommend masks, that essentially meant that a lot of students would not wear a mask voluntarily because of the inconvenience. But, um, that would increase the risk a lot. And I know that on Thursday, we could go to the low category, but even if we are in the low or the medium, understandably, there is a huge drop in cases, as Member Murawski calculated, but the number is still not zero. So there is always a risk that there's going to be another COVID outbreak. And if we mask after, there's, the numbers start to rise again, that may be too late, and there would be another outbreak, and students would be harmed, and there would be learning loss again. And I just think that it would be wiser to continue masking until the end of the school year, and especially since spring break would come up soon. That would also meant that more students might go on breaks and increase the risk of getting COVID, and that would then spread around schools and campuses. So I just do not see the reason why we are looking to lift the mask mandate before the school year is about to end, and I would just like to comment on that a little. Thank you.
Thank you, student member Zhang. Member Wu.
I was just going, I was just going to ask, when is, uh, spring break?
April 11th.
April 11th, and then they come back to school when?
Come back on the 18th.
There is a strong possibility of a spike. I would recommend sometime after spring ba, break.
Thank you, Member Wu. Member Garcia?
I've just been thinking a lot about this, maybe overthinking it too. Trying to read as much as I can, trying to follow what other districts are doing who are in similar situations, not only here regionally, because it makes sense that we mirror our region, since we're a county, a lot of this is based on county data. Recognizing sort of the differences by the ZIP code within our district in terms of vaccination rates and whatnot, and just still sort of reflecting on the, the district's efforts from the beginning, the mitigation efforts that were put in place, and how they were, as a district, ahead of the game relative to other districts in terms of testing, vaccination clinics. And so, and we still have low vaccination rates. We've been very intentional about where those vaccination clinics should be, ought to be, continue to be. And I'm just trying to figure out what, I don't know, I, I just feel so helpless because I just wish they were higher. I'm not sure how to make that go up. I also have read and reread the guidance from like CDC, CDPH, and just trying to figure out sort of what is the best path forward, not only as a board member, but I'm a parent of two, two kids in the district. And I just think that the staff recommendation is, 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 is sort of a middle ground. I know for many of our parents, I want to, I want to acknowledge all, everybody who sent emails. We got a lot of emails, a lot of people who called in, people signing petitions. We heard from, from both sides, and people feel equally passionate and strongly about, you know, either side of the, of the argument. But I do, I do just want to just lift up the staff's thoughtful recommendation. Again, again, I feel like it puts us in a middle spot because we have a date in mind, but it's contingent upon certain, meeting certain metrics, staying low, staying low for two weeks, and then also flipping the switch if we start seeing an increase or a spike. So that gives us time, similar to other districts, gives us time to, to continue to follow the data, continue, look at the science, follow the data, and continue to make an informed decision. So, so either way, I feel that, that our parents won't be happy. Some of our students are not going to be happy. But it is a very thoughtful recommendation, so I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank you for that. I did have one question. In terms of, let me find my slide. Oh, in terms of two questions. One is the social-emotional work that is happening. Can you please go into a little bit of that? Because at the end of the day, our students, my, my kids will probably also continue to mask because they, they feel comfortable at this point. It's, it's a comfort thing for them. But I'm just wondering, what does that look like for students who could want to continue to be masked despite being vaccinated and boosted? And also, what is, just what does that look like for students who, who choose not to mask?
Yeah, we, you know, the minute that this recommendation came down, we knew, you know, many of us feel actually torn, right? We feel maybe excited and anxious and scared, and the duality, right, of, of all of those conflicting feelings, and that's what we wanted to support our community with. You know, regardless what decision is made tonight, our students and our parents and our staff are going to face these kinds of decisions in other, you know, venues as well. And so we are partnering with our SEL team to create a series of slides and activities that we can do with our adults in our system, with our staff and our site leaders, and then, you know, with our teachers, and ultimately then with our students, whether that's in the classroom or maybe, you know, a, a group. And really about being able to kind of see, you know, both sides have empathy, be okay with my choice, but also be okay with yours, addressing bullying, addressing identifying feelings, particularly when our feelings are conflicting. That's really difficult for young kids, and many of us that parent or know and love children have probably had one of those conversations. So it's supporting them through that process, and, you know, if we identify other needs, you know, just like we've done with COVID, we, we want to pivot and be responsive to what the social, emotional, mental health needs of our, our students. I, I do also just want to share, one of the things that, that we really want to, you know, kind of ground on is that our continued surveillance testing really does serve as an early warning system in our communities, and that happens every week right now. And that is how we saw such a steep decline, because we were able to catch those cases, test the whole family, because that was an equity ethic that, that our district embraced, and stop the spread in those social circles or in those communities. And that's where we really saw these sharp declines, because we could also follow those protocols for households. So that does just give us, you know, another measure of kind of reassurance, you know, whatever our decision is here tonight, that, that we will continue to have that surveillance going in our community. I really do think it's, it's a whole county benefit, because what we find here in SAC City oftentimes does benefit the whole entire county or community.
And, and then the vaccination clinics, I mean, those are still going to be on schedule. I know I see, I think every day, there's almost one every day at, at, at some school or another, so that is still going to be on track and at the same level of pace, with the same priority in terms of the communities that we want to see more highly vaccinated.
Yes, we are continuing to double down on those and continuing to do that outreach. I do want to say, I know people, you know, are looking at our vaccination rate. We do feel pretty confident that's an underreporting of our vaccination rate, because that's just what parents or guardians have provided to us. We are not able to use the tools that we typically have at our disposal of looking at that California Immunization Registry for COVID vaccine. We can do that for other school required, but because it's not, we have to have that parent permission first. And so I, I do just want to share, you know, we continue to get vaccine records, and we continue to ask. They just are trickling in.
Okay, so, so it's, it's probably the, I guess the outlook doesn't look as bleak as what the numbers show right now, so that's encouraging. And then just lastly, as we move, if we were to move from low to medium, and maybe medium to start trending high, does that, that decision come back to the board? Or is that something that staff has the authority to kind of flip the switch and say, we're moving in a, in a direction, and the, you know, the data indicates that we should be masking, and then that decision gets made at the staff level?
That's a good question, and I, I will probably defer to Superintendent, but I do want to say that we differ in that recommendation from pretty much any other, you know, district that I've seen so far. Maybe, maybe we'll find other districts, because we are kind of taking that bold statement of saying if we move to high or even moderate, or we see any other trends, right, particularly troubling trends here, we're going to be looking for those yellow caution lights. And, and so I'll defer to Superintendent on what that decision would look like.
Yeah, certainly, and I think I do appreciate Member Murawski's comments on that. Certainly, I hope that we don't have to make those kinds of shifts. In a conversation that I had with Dr. Casirier about, as we were exploring this recommendation, she did acknowledge that this seemed like a prudent step, given what Member Phillips has indicated about the higher COVID transmission rates that have impacted our school district and, and this community. So we would continue to consult, of course, with SAC County Public Health, as we have done for all of this time during the pandemic. And I think that through those consultations, Dr. Casirier has always leaned in with her team to better understand the, the circumstances that we face in Sacramento that might be more unique or different certainly than, than other parts of our, of Sacramento County. So we, we would continue to do that, Member Garcia.
Thank you so much. But that's still a decision. Where, where does the final decision get made, at the board level or at the staff level? Just, just to understand sort of how much more time gets added because of the process.
Yeah, you know, I, 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 I think that what we have demonstrated, and I think what the board has demonstrated, is a willingness, both on our staff's part and the board, to do what we're doing today, which is a special board meeting to discuss this as soon as we were able to, given the additional consultations that we had with SAC County Public Health on Friday. I'm grateful to the board for your commitment. We were here very late on Thursday. We're here again on Tuesday. So to answer your question, Member Garcia, we would probably pursue the same path, that as soon as we have any kind of indication that we need to communicate to the board and to our community about concerns that we are seeing, we will do that, which, which I just think is, is, is the healthiest way of doing this from a governance perspective. You, you all represent vast communities throughout the district and have information that is always useful to us, and, and we appreciate that, and, and think that we would continue along the same path.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Victoria, for all your work.
Thank you. Um, member, first, member Rhodes, just a quick time check, it's 10:15, unless you want to extend the meeting and just time, time checking. Uh, member Rhodes.
Thank you, and thank you, Victoria Kancy, everyone. So, so, so a couple of things, as I get to sit and listen to my colleagues' thoughts and sentiments and statements. I, I, I think Board Member Zhang, her statements are, are, I think, ones that weighed the heaviest on me out of every, every, all of my colleagues to hear the youth's perspective and, and her truth in, in this space as we make decisions as adults, I, I think is very powerful. I would also say that we have Burbank, over the last few testing cycles of, of their testing for students, they've had no COVID rates coming back as positive, and that's in the heart of South Sacramento. But I, but I do contribute that to our, our robust and rigorous things that we have in place, which also include masking. I understand also what Member Phillips has expressed around the communities that are most impacted, and what that means and what that looks like, and how we have to take that in consideration. And then I also understand the science and the guidelines from the county and how we've always aligned what we've done to the science, and we've always continually to say, when we, we went to our vaccine mandate, it was due to the science. We went to masking, it's due to science. The testing is due to the science. So I understand that as well. Personally, from the conversations I've had in my community, with, with also other students, but with teachers, staff, family members, and, and it, it feels like, in, in my head, we, we should... but with teachers, staff, family members, it feels like in my head we should continue masking, but I will say I would I would like to give a happy medium to this to this discussion. Right now, the recommendation of staff is to go if we get to the green in two weeks. I would like to add, if we go to green and we do four weeks, to to really really assess and see what it looks like. If we're looking at the mapping of things, that that would possibly put us out to the 18th of April. And so that that would be my happy medium recommendation, given the understanding that in reality, I would say I'm more aligned with Member Zhang and Phillips, but also understanding how we've always aligned with the science of what we're doing. But I do believe we need a larger runway to really gauge what we're looking at and so that we can be more proactive and not reactive as a district and how we service our community. So that would be my recommendation moving forward as a happy medium between the two, so we can really gauge and see how this impacts our community.
Thank you, Member Rhodes. Member Morowski?
Thank you for recognizing me again. I apologize for for the further question. I know we had talked a lot about the masking requirement, so I just wanted to to make sure that I kind of lifted up that the part of the recommendation is also related to the vaccine requirement. And just wanted to ask for some clarification on the timing of the state. So the if I understand the recommendation, it's to align with the the state requirement. Are we clear on when that state requirement goes into effect yet?
So not necessarily. So right now, you know, it is contingent on the vaccine being fully authorized for 12 and older before, I believe, it's July 2022. And so if if it's approved, then the the governor's mandate goes into effect July of 2022. I keep asking when that might happen from our SAC County Public Health, you know, colleagues, I've not gotten an update yet. I know that application has been submitted. We do understand and know that CDPH is drafting, you know, those regulations so that they are ready, but we can't offer a definitive at this point.
Well, I would, I mean, I'm very disappointed that we couldn't get there, but I need to face reality too, and we we are not there for a variety of reasons, and we will not get there on our own. I I am a little bit concerned about moving to adopt the state guideline because it may not even be for the coming fall. It may be for, I think, then it would be January. That seems really late, and I would I would like another opportunity to to revisit that if that wasn't going to happen by July. So I don't know if we if we have a a recommendation on if we can.
That could be in a motion.
I don't necessarily want to wait until January if this if that ends up being being the the state guidance. So, gosh, and I know we haven't really had a chance to to really discuss that piece. So I'm wondering, I don't want to be a pain here, but I do think it's important to to know whether we're whether we're talking about July, which would be September or January with respect to this decision and based on, you know, what what comes out between now and, you know, and September might be might be significant, who knows? So I am open to, I don't mean to put you on the spot here either. I'm open to if you if you have a recommendation for a motion that would that would maybe let us revisit that. Or, you know, I mean, I'm fine with I'm fine with kind of continuing, you know, down the road that that is laid out here for for now. But if I could, if I could, you know, amend this staff recommendation to just revisit the vaccine mandate question later and like later in our our school year or something like that with that. I'm looking at Victoria or Superintendent to.
I think I'm looking at Superintendent.
Okay, yeah, I I'm looking to legal counsel only in that I do think it's appropriate that as part of a motion, you could indicate a date certain by which we would come back with an update to the board as we get more information from the state and and then make any adjustments. But certainly, we would probably indicate to our community that we will not impose a mandate before the end of the academic year, for example.
Yeah.
We can come at whatever point you think is appropriate. Just a reminder to the board, we typically have not met in July. Doesn't mean that we won't meet in July. But as you think about a motion and a date that you would like us to come back with an update or no later, then a date to come back with an update, just consider that we typically have not met in July.
Sure.
August might be too late for 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 a report back to the board, so.
Well, we may have we may have more information before July. So what can we say, like June 16th, which would be our last regular board meeting?
Are we not voting on pushing for the first motion, seeing if it goes through and then having secondary motions after that?
Well, we haven't got.
Sorry, if she motions, then the motion has to go through.
I also motioned for a week.
I don't, was that a formal motion?
We didn't you didn't ask for motions yet or recognize anyone for motions yet.
So motion, I was going to clarify, so motion, we're not we're not motioning on the first recommendation first. We're motioning on.
Whatever motion that she's doing, yeah, we're not motioning because she's not motioning on this. No, you didn't ask for a motion. And then we didn't ask for a second or anything. Go ahead, Ann.
President Pritchett has not called for a motion yet. What you did was make a recommendation for an amendment to the staff recommendations. Member Morowski also made a proposed amendment to the staff recommendations. So when President Pritchett calls for a motion at that time, either any board member may make a motion and incorporate the recommendations from you and Member Morowski as needed.
That's what I needed the clarity. Thank you so much for that.
Yeah, thank you. And I I think then President Pritchett would call for a motion and then recognize whomever at her chair's prerogative to to provide the motion. If am I, I think I got that right. Okay, I'm getting a thumbs up. Okay. Okay, well, that's that's I think that I think that would be that would be helpful. I think we could just use more certainty about that and and keep that option open. I I would also like to see just, you know, an ability to quickly reimpose the mask mandate if needed. And I would I would recommend that we do, you know, if we start going to the medium because we know what this thing looks like, right? It looks like a roller coaster. So if we know if we're going up, we're going to continue to go up until it peaks and then we go down, right? So if we see it going up, I don't think we have to wait around to figure out what's going to happen. It's probably going to continue to go up. And and so I I'm happy to, from a governance perspective, vote to do that. I'm happy to also, you know, provide staff with the authority to do that. It sounds like, you know, we'd rather come back and have that discussion at that time. So that's that's fine. I will be I will be on board, just to be clear. So either way. And then just just lastly, I want to I want to acknowledge, you know, the comments that have that have come forward about, you know, different areas of our community being harder hit by COVID, which is 100% true. And also just to acknowledge that, you know, when the the county numbers vary dramatically, like all the different communities will track. It might be a little different from what the countywide level is, but it's generally tracking. So when it's really high in the county, it's really high in those areas and it's lower. So it's it's different, it can be different, but to me, it seems it seems like it generally tracks. So I think that's why I was okay with with using the the countywide numbers, even though it's not like a perfect correlation. I think when the countywide numbers are low, our our district is low, you know, relative to where we've been. So I would, to be clear, happy to move the staff recommendation at the appropriate time with the amendment that with respect to the vaccine mandate, that we would receive a board report back to to potentially, you know, take action or have a decision about the vaccine mandate on or before June 16th, which is our last regular board meeting.
Member Phillips?
Okay, so let me get this straight. March 28th is kind of a drop dead date that we're looking at. However, if we look at what student board member Zhang said and was supported by board member Wu, is that if spring break starts on August 11th, kids come back on the 18th, we look at two weeks after that to avoid the spike? April 18th, what did I say? Oh, haha, starts with an A, my bad. April 18th, then two weeks after spring break is over would be May 2nd. I would feel more comfortable looking at May 2nd as a day, even though if we've already gotten to May 2nd, we might as well go to the end of the school year. But if we're looking at dates, then I it just seems really unclear. Like right now, we're saying the 28th, we're going to go on spring break, we might have a spike, and then we're going to have to reinstate the masks. Why not just wait until after spring break, which is probably our last opportunity to have a spike at school? Ms. Flores?
We, you know, that's definitely something that we can consider. I do want to share with the board, we will be doing the at-home COVID test kit distribution before spring break, and and we have those in stock already and and, you know, prepped and ready. So we will be using that same strategy that was so successful from when we came, you know, back from winter break as well as those three-day weekends, if that just provides any kind of relief or, you know, a little bit of extra, you know, caution as well as opening our regional testing centers, you know, during spring break, much like we did on those Monday holidays, because we know when a family does use those test kits and finds a positive, then that whole entire family can come and get tested. So I just wanted to offer that up as well.
Okay, I'd like to hear from the rest of my colleagues on that little date thing, but I know we probably need to do some extension of time, Madam President.
You do not have to do an extension during special board meetings, I was told.
Oh, good. Okay, so so maybe everybody wants to try and chime in on what I just talked about, specifically that that date change. Call it a recommendation or.
Member Rhodes?
Thank you. I I hear everyone, and I think I would like to motion to move forward the the staff's recommendation along with Member Morowski's, Morowski's addition, but with with the caveat also, instead of two weeks, I would like to add four weeks to that. So Member Morowski, your staff recommendation, adding adding two weeks to your two weeks, so four weeks instead of two weeks, along with Member Morowski's also recommendation and and addition to the COVID vaccinating that, coming back to the board and speaking about it. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah, can you give us?
So so I wasn't thinking I wasn't thinking dates. I was thinking vaccination vaccination in low plus four weeks out. So it's similar to what.
Was that April 11th?
So it's like around April, April 11th, April 18th. So I'm thinking after spring break. We're saying we're saying that we could possibly hit our green this week, but that's not 100% for sure. And so the reason why I'm saying not necessarily a date is saying a range of four weeks from the time we hit green, instead of two weeks, four weeks from the time we hit green, plus Member Morowski's recommendation along with that. That's the motion I would feel comfortable pushing forward.
Thank you. Member Garcia?
I was trying to get clarification on the dates and and sort of the the goal of extending the dates or the timeline. I think consistently, in terms of guidance in the past and what we've been following, and Victoria, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like it's a two-week marker that we followed in terms of the transition points. So I'm trying to figure out what happens. What additional information do we have by extending it another two-week, I guess, period? And then what happens when kids show up unmasked in the meantime? So I'm just trying to figure out sort of what the goal is, and I think I think I know what the goal is, but just wondering what happens in the interim if, you know, students and families, they already know we're having this conversation, are frustrated and still send their kids to school without a mask or kids don't want to wear a mask. So just trying to figure out what happens in that situation. So, you know, balancing like the goal with the reality and and just anyway, just processing that out loud.
Sure. Go ahead, Victoria.
Okay, yeah. So so our, you know, the two weeks was what we used last time to really just kind of ensure that that downward trend was was what we thought we saw. We already saw a downward trend. We just wanted to give ourselves a little bit more time without, you know, really frustrating our community. And and we saw the trend already, right? So that did give us about, you know, a month. So that was, we thought, reasonable to use in this case as well. We see the downward trend in CDC data, SCPH, also our own, which I think is so, you know, important as as Member Phillips lifted up in our own testing data, you know, but but that really is a, you know, a board decision that would give you another month, right, of data should we meet that metric like we expect to this week? And then the enforcement piece, I, you know, I think I would probably want to look at our legal. I think it does get a little bit more difficult because CDC and CDPH and SCPH have all lifted their requirement. You know, yes, we can have our own, you know, and Superintendent, I don't know if you want to add on to that.
Well, I I mean, I I hear what Member Garcia, just as you're thinking out loud, I wish I could tell you what's going to happen on Monday when the rest of the region is basically going to move away from masking. From an enforcement perspective, we probably won't have the resources to say, you know, we did two weeks or we did four weeks or whatever the board decides and we move those students to a cafeteria, to an auditorium for two weeks or for four weeks. What I do want to be very clear is any student who chooses to continue to mask is 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 going to hear from us that it's still strongly recommended. And but what we don't know is if it'll be 90%, 80%, 70%. It's very difficult for us to make that assessment and tell you what what's going to happen, except for what we think may happen across the region. Because we, as Victoria mentioned, our recommendation is one that is tied to to this particular metric. And and we thought that that was a recommendation that we needed to make so that our recommendation was objective. But certainly, we we are here as staff to hear your discussion. We thought that doing it before spring break, that we could continue to encourage our students and our families to try to keep that that status of low as opposed to. to try to keep that, that status of low, as opposed to waiting to see what happens after spring break, depending on what kind of gatherings take place. Of course, again, we, we don't know what's going to happen. And, and that's been a, a, a common theme for the past two years related to COVID. So we, we, we came with, with, with that recommendation, which is aligned to what we've been doing to make sure that before we opened up extracurricular activities, before we allowed for indoor dances and all of those kinds of things, that we ensured that at least for two weeks past, reaching a milestone, that those trends continued. But we are open to, to implement a longer period of time than, than what we've done in the past.
Member Murawski?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just...
I'm sorry. I was just ready to make a motion at the appropriate time.
Okay. Well, I'm calling this to motion. So, yeah.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry. Member Vella, go ahead.
No, I quickly, thank you so much. I just wanted to indicate, you know, we, we, since we've been in this space, we have always talked about following the guidelines. And that is what we've done in all of our decisions. And I think moving forward, what we'll continuously do, and like I stated earlier, we are, we are not the experts on this, but I do believe the two-week span is an ample time past the, the deadline of it being lifted is fair. And again, folks can choose still to wear that, but we, we, we either follow the science that we've been saying for so long in the community, or we don't. And I think we need to follow through with that on all of our actions that we, any voting that we do moving forward.
Yeah, I actually agree with you, Member Vella. I do, I know there was a board comment about, that we think that maybe this was kind of in the middle. And I don't think that that's the case at all, in my opinion. I think that staff really thoroughly did their homework and is following the science like we have said. And there, there may be, we may have to re-mask again, but we can't live in fear of that as well. So, let's see. Member Phillips, you have your light on?
Okay. So again, we're going to try and make sure that I understand this. We are saying that March 28th is not the day that we're going to do as a stop date. We're going to do that more instead on the 18th. What we're talking about doing is on the 18th. If we do it on the 18th, how are we supposed to know if there have been any spikes? Children are testing before spring break, then they're coming back, and we will have already decided at some point that we're masking or unmasking on the day the kids come back to school. So how is, how does that work? How are we supposed to, to send them home with tests, get test results back on the day that the, the students are supposed to go back to class?
Yes. So depending on, you know, what the board makes that decision tonight, we are going to do those at-home COVID test distribution kind of regardless. That was already in our plan from our experience at winter and the two, three-day weekends. So they go home with that test. What we had guided them last time was to take one, I, I think it was on Friday, and then Sunday. I know, you know, many people celebrate Easter on Sunday. So, you know, if you take it Saturday, you report your results. Of course, if you're positive, you stay home. That was really successful for us. At winter break, over 550 positives were found during that surge over the three-day weekends. You know, as cases were coming down, it was roughly over 100 on that first weekend and a little under 100 on that second consecutive weekend. So that would be our, our goal and our hope. And then know that surveillance testing picks right back up as soon as students come back on Monday. The other strong recommendation we were already, you know, considering is many of us may travel over that spring break or gather. And if we did those activities, you know, to really encourage our community, symptom screen and mask, if you did, you know, travel, just like the CDC already does make those recommendations when we travel out of the country and also test. So, you know, whatever the board decides tonight, we would still be moving forward with that kind of guidance and, and recommendation for our community around returning from a break.
Okay, so... We know people are going to gather. We know people are going to travel. We know kids are going to come back to school. We know they're going to be back on the 18th. And if I'm correct, maybe there is some research that says that the, the tests that we have don't catch the most recent, not the most recent, the one before, the variant that we had. Are there, are there issues with that test not catching the variant? Okay.
You know, I think you, you can kind of find some science debatable one way or the other. Those test kits are rapid antigen tests. They tend to be a little less sensitive than that PCR lab test, where you, you know, send it away and you wait two or three days. I will say what we, you know, kind of quickly learned is having those quick results, you know, really did catch a lot more cases than, you know, the, the PCR test that is going to catch you like right when you're infectious, where maybe the rapid antigen test won't. But sometimes if you test again, if you continue to be symptomatic, it will catch that. So I will say those rapid antigen, those at-home test kits prove to be really effective. And because of the, the rapidness of being able to know, identify, and then track and trace, right? Notify those families so they can take those measures.
So everything we're doing is proactive at this point. And, you know, to me, it doesn't feel as much like fear as it does just trying to make sure that we're doing this right. So, I mean, I still feel that it would be better if we waited two weeks after spring break to see that we reached a low, and then hold it for two weeks and then go. But I get it. I, you know, I could make a recommendation, but of course, that would involve a lot more discussion about. So I would like for us to really entertain the idea of waiting after spring break. I think last time I said it was a recommendation. So maybe that's a new recommendation of the same thing. I would prefer that we wait two weeks after spring break.
Thank you, Member Phillips. Member Murawski? Oh, the light keeping going on for some reason. Okay. All right. I'm going to call this to, for, for a motion. So right now, we have Member Murawski's motion with some recommendations by, first by Member Rhodes. Would you like to entertain those? Yes, on your, on your motion?
Oh, so I, I wanted to make a motion.
You had made a motion earlier.
Well, I, I discussed my preference. Now I'm making the motion, right? Okay. All right. I, I, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the staff recommendation with the option for the board to revisit the vaccine mandate, with, with the district bringing back this topic on or before June 16th, 2022, which is our last regular board meeting of the year. I also, with one additional change to the staff recommendation, to recognize the concern around spring break and potential spikes and unknowns, my amended motion, or my motion to amend the staff recommendation would also include that the week of April 18th, that we do mask for that week coming back.
Okay.
So recognizing that, you know, like we said, this might need to go on and off depending on circumstances. We might need to reimpose it to be proactive. I would like to just, you know, do the staff recommendation. We will, we will, we will do it, you know, if we stay in the low for two weeks, we will stay, we will remove the masks, but recognizing that there, there are risks, unknown risks of coming back from spring break. We would have the week of, the week coming back from spring break to actually wear the masks again, just to, to make sure that we can come back. And then we'll have testing done throughout that week. And then we'll have the masks on as a proactive measure to make sure we don't see any spikes. And if we do see anything, then we can mitigate it right away and, you know, and keep, and keep it for a period of time if needed. So that is my motion that is on the table.
Thank you, Member Murawski. Do you have a second? All right, I'll second it. Did you question?
I just, yeah, I have a clarifying question. So my question is, I think I followed up until the masking. So is, is the motion on the table that the staff recommendation is to sort of, I guess, we go maskless on, if we stay in the low, we go maskless on March 28th? And then we go, hopefully, everything still stays in the low, but the week of, of when we come back from spring break, the week of, of April 18th, everybody wears a mask. So mask off, mask on. Is that?
Correct. Well, I would characterize it, yes, that's basically correct in terms of mandatory masking. I would characterize it a little differently in practical terms, because it's not, we're gonna, and it's not going to be all maskless and then all masked, right? Like, we still strongly recommend masking throughout the whole time. So everyone who wants to wear a mask will wear a mask. And so I, I wouldn't expect like the whole system to be maskless at any given time, because I, I think, you know, a lot of folks, a lot of, a lot of students will still want to wear a mask. So, yeah. So, again, I, you know, I, I don't think there's any perfect solution here, but recognizing that we have had spikes in, after prior spring breaks, I think the risk is lower now. But if we can do this to be proactive and make sure that we don't have any spikes or, or outbreaks that, for that week as we come back, I think that, I think that is a good compromise that will address some of the concerns. So that's the motion on the table.
Okay.
Thank you for that question.
All right. So we have a motion in a second on the table. Student preferential vote?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Oh, yeah.
So does that mean March 28th, we lift the mandate without discussion?
Yes. Do you want to read, read? If, if, if those criteria are met. So it's not, we're not deciding on a date right now. We're deciding on the criteria that if we go into the low and stay there for two weeks, at that point, then we could, we would lift it. So the discussion is really about, you know, we're deciding on the objective criteria for when that date is, based on the data.
Okay. Um, no.
All right. Superintendent Roll Call?
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Garcia? Member Rhodes?
No.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu? Member Phillips?
No.
Member Garcia?
No. Okay, motion fails. Member Rhodes, would you like to state your motion?
My, my motion is similar to Member Murawski's. Only difference is that we, for the two, two-week metric point, we go four-week metric point. So it was really looking at after. It's how, how Member Murawski was saying that we come back and have masks on after the break. What I'm saying is that we keep masks on till the break. And so how Member Murawski was thinking that, you know, we're being proactive in putting masks on afterwards, I think we're being more proactive by keeping masks on until. That, that's my motion.
Okay. In that date, you're talking April 18th, to be clear?
Yes.
April 18th. Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Motion a second. Student preferential vote?
No.
All right. Superintendent Roll Call?
Member Pritchett?
No.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
No.
Member Wu?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes.
For Phillips?
I'm sorry.
Member Phillips?
I'm guilty.
No.
I'm sorry, Member Phillips?
No.
No. All right. Motion passes. Four to three. Spring break, April 18th. All right. Thank you, Victoria, for all of your hard work. This has been quite a ride for you, I'm sure, and your staff. So thank you for everything that you do for our students. All right. 4.0, we're moving back into closed session. Yes? What was that? Oh, we have public comment?
We have the public comment, yeah.
We have public comment on closed session on 4.0. Okay, go ahead.
The first speaker is Sarah Bailey.
Go ahead, Ms. Bailey.
Hi. I had asked for some extra time earlier, thinking I might not still be with you at this late time. But I am. And I, I'll just reiterate what I said earlier. We, as a classified staff, you know, we carried this district through some really difficult times the last two years. And the fact that on your website, the things that are listed as potential proposals are 2% cuts across the board to take-home pay, cuts to our health benefits, furlough days. In addition to the recent cuts in, in actual classified positions, it's just really, really hard to fathom that that's, that that's where we find ourselves as frontline workers and people that are the backbone of the district. It feels so disrespectful. People are not making a living wage. People are hurting. People are barely getting by. And the fact that folks aren't coming to the table and bargaining in good faith, to do what's right for your classified employees is shameful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Next speaker?
Our final speaker is Christopher Williams.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams. I think you're on mute, Mr. Williams. Go ahead. Still on mute? Mr. Williams, are you able to unmute yourself? I'll give you just a second. Okay, sorry, Mr. Williams. All right, we are moving into closed session.